Good evening and welcome to the April 3, 2012, meeting of the Lake Forest Zoning Board of Appeals. The Board is here tonight to work together with all of you, property owners, neighbors, and architects, to continue the tradition that allows community members to work together to preserve the qualities and the unique character that make Lake Forest a special community. We recognize the personal importance of each petitioner's request. Our goal is to respect the requests of the owner while balancing the interests of the community as a whole. For those of you who may not be familiar with the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Board hears all requests for variations in zoning and special use permits. The City of Lake Forest is committed to conducting open meetings. To achieve that goal, the Board has adopted meeting procedures that ensure that all parties have an opportunity to speak. The procedures are detailed on the agendas available at the back of the room. This meeting is also broadcast on cable television. Speaking on behalf of the entire Board and city staff, our goal is to move each petition through the review process as quickly as possible while at the same time balancing the interests of the petitioners, neighboring property owners, and the larger community. At this time, I would like the Board members to introduce themselves.
Lloyd Culbertson, 4th Ward.
Richard Kristoff, 4th Ward.
Stuart Dixon, 2nd Ward.
Bob Franksen, 1st Ward.
Kate Kennedy, 4th Ward.
Rosemary Care, 2nd Ward. And now I would like the city staff to please introduce themselves.
Megan O'Neil.
Goran Radovanovic.
Thank you. First order of business is approval of the minutes of the February 27, 2012 executive session and regular meeting.
I think we only have the second piece of the executive session.
Yes, you are correct. We have at this time only the minutes from the executive session meeting. We will deal with the minutes of the regular meeting at the next zoning board meeting.
Move to approve the second executive session minutes.
I'll second that.
Does anyone have any comments on the minutes?
No.
Okay. All those in favor of adopting the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. The motion is carried. Minutes are accepted. Now we have a new petition this evening, a public hearing in action to consider a request for approval of a variance from the lot-in-depth zoning requirements to allow construction of an addition to the residence at 1137 North Green Bay Road. The owners are Dean and Mary Sundberg, and the representative is John Krasnodobski, architect.
Madam Chair.
Sorry.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to acknowledge that I know the Sundbergs personally, but it shouldn't have any bearing on my decision.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the Board that would like to address any conflicts of interest or ex-party contacts?
No.
Mr. Krasnodobski.
Thank you, Chairman Kurt.
Um, I believe...
Commissioners?
I believe we need to swear you in.
I apologize.
Let's see. Do you see? Don't see it tonight. Well, we may be a little more informal.
Is the testimony you're about to give true to the best of your knowledge?
Thank you, Mr. Franksen. Is the testimony...
For your consideration, Madam Chair.
Is the testimony you're about to give true to the best of your knowledge and information?
Yes, it is.
And please identify yourself.
My name is John Krasnodobski. I'm the architect for this project, and my company is Lake Forest Landmark Development. So thanks for coming tonight and listening to our petition. I'm here tonight to ask for a variance to the zoning code in regards to a side yard setback. The project that we're going to discuss tonight is the Sundberg residence, and it's located at 1137 North Green Bay Road. And it's a quiet little subdivision and very little traveled, very nice property. We'll start right away with the visual part of the presentation here. So I have some photographs of the home and the property. So this picture on the upper left shows the front of the home. And as you can see, the home is sited in the middle of the property. So there's quite a large front yard and a large backyard as well, beautiful piece of property. It's 40,000 square feet approximately. It's accessed by a private road. There are three other homes in this little subdivision. They're all categorized as lot-in-depth properties because they don't face a public street, Green Bay Road. So they have different zoning regulations for these lots, a bit more unusual, a little more stringent than your typical lot. So the Sundbergs are requesting an addition on the north side of the home so they can do a master suite downstairs and a garage addition. Mrs. Sundberg is, has some serious bone condition, and she's having difficulty getting upstairs to where the master bedroom is. And so this is going to be a very convenient, much more accessible home for them. So the addition is going to be on the north side of the home, and you can see a view of the north side of the home here. So you can see the side loaded garage. So part of our project is to add a third car stall on the front of the home to the side of the existing home. And the aesthetics and the design of the new addition will be very compatible, very integrated with the existing home. It meets all the other regulations of the building ordinances, height, square footage, lot coverage. So the only variance we're requesting is for this side yard setback. Here is a view of the back of the property. This is the back of the home now, so a bulk of the addition is going to be occurring on the rear of the property. Here's another view of the back of the home, and so moving on to other views. This is a nice view of the neighborhood property, the neighboring property. This is the detached garage to the property to the north. So it's detached, and the home is further to the north of this home. Here you have a pullback view of that driveway. It's a horseshoe-shaped driveway, so this is the access to the garage. You can see this evergreen screening, which is year-round, which is a great mitigating factor in making any addition visible from the neighbor to the north. And this is, picture was taken in the winter, so you can see this is the most bare it's going to look. Here's close up of the fence, which we're going to redo and reconnect it to the home once we do the addition. This shows a close-up of where the garage is going to go. Another picture, just to show some additional views of the existing home. And then I'll scroll to this one so you can get an idea of the streetscape. So here we have the neighborhood view looking northwest. You can see some of the neighboring properties to the north, and then another, another view looking north. So let's just go right to the site plan because I think that's the most telling picture of the project. And let's scroll down one more, and here we have it. So this is a site plan of the home, and I'm going to use my laser pointer here to point out the existing home is outlined, and the additions are hatched. I know there's a lot of lines here, so I'll try to make it as clear as possible. So the existing home is basically a T shape. You can see on the front, we have the one-stall garage, so we have to reconfigure the driveway slightly to move away from that one-car stall there. So this darker asphalt patching shows where the new driveway is going to be. And then we can see here where the addition is, mostly to the rear of the home and a little bit to the side. This is all one-story construction. It's much lower in height than the existing home is. It's all made of compatible materials to the existing home, siding to match, roofing to match. The details with shutters and windows and soffin fascia are all matching architecture. So the main story here is the setback, and so I have a line drawn. So this is what the existing setback requirement is, which is 40 feet from the property line. So as you can see here, the existing home has a lot of nonconformity existing. This home was built in 1958. There was a zoning code enacted in 1979, much later, that made it nonconforming. So at the time it was built, it was conforming. New zoning code made it nonconforming. So that's creating most of the hardship here. So the best scheme to do this addition is on the side and the rear. We explored other options. On the other side, it would also require a variance there. We didn't want to put a large mass on the front of the home, didn't think that was appropriate. The master suite should be on the first floor towards the rear of the property, close to the kitchen, close to the garage. So this made perfect sense. It made, it made the alternatives unfeasible, and so we felt that this was the best solution to the project. And considering that it's well-screened from the street, from the neighbors, it's very low in height, very compatible in design, that we felt was a very successful addition to the project, and certainly something that would make the home very livable for the Sundbergs. So we are requesting this variance due to the hardship of the zoning code. And I'm going to show you quickly some of the elevations, as you can see, some of the architecture and some compatibility of the home. So you can see here, the large two-story structure is original. The garage facade is, the existing elevation is exactly this design, and we're simply pulling it forward by 12 feet to accommodate a third-car garage. You can see the additions on the side, which is, this is set much further back from the face of the garage. So you can see what we did with the roof line. We put a hip roof there to really, again, make the massing as low as possible on the addition. You can see we have a covered side-entry porch, and we have this handicap ramp to get accessibility into the home from the side. So the front is all the same materials, and the side is all the same materials existing on the home as well. This is the rear elevation where most of the activity is going to be. You can see it's all one-story. This is the office, part of the suite, master suite, and then here's a breakfast room nook. And moving on to the garage elevation, you can see the existing garage door. Here's the new. Here's the covered porch, and then here's the side and rear addition that we're requesting a variance for. Again, you can see the original home is beyond, and it's much taller roofline. I won't, I won't show you the floor plan, but if you're interested, I could definitely show you that. So let's, let's just go back to the site plan, and I think I've covered most of the pertinent information. So I'm hoping that, you know, you'll find this addition compatible with, with the existing home, and, and hopefully we can get this variance. Maybe I'll go into specifics about the distances. 40 feet is what the existing side yard setback is. As you can see, there's a large portion that's already over that. So what we're going to end up with is 18 feet from the addition to the property line at the, at the most furthest point of the proposed addition. There's no rear yard setback variances. It's all on this side here, and it's, it's mostly that side portion of the addition there. I wanted to show you the garage that's neighboring to the north. That's a detached garage, and you can see this cluster of evergreen. It's very tall, and it renders the properties not visible from each other. I think that covers most of it. So thank you for listening, and hopefully you'll prove it. Thanks.
Thank you. And now we'd like to hear identification of the issues from city staff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The petitioner explained in pretty good detail what part his request is. We have only a few things to add. Just a few points as a reminder. This is a request for approval for a lot-in-depth setback variance. The petitioner is seeking the variance in order to construct an addition on the existing residence that is only on the ground level. To clarify about a lot-in-depth, it is basically a property that is accessed by a private drive rather than a public street, like usually. And a lot-in-depth requirement of the zoning code does ask for additional setbacks than regular lots. And basically what the lot-in-depth setback requirements are, it requires that the front yard setback is applied to all sides, from all sides of the property, not just from the front. And in this case, that is 40 feet, which is applicable in an R3 zoning district. This particular lot's configuration resulted from a subdivision that was created in 1955. Their existing residence was built in 1958. At that time, it was, did comply with the zoning requirements, and in 1966, there was an addition on the north side property, on the north side of the building as well. And that was also in compliance with the zoning code at that time. The city did adopt a lot-in-depth provision in the zoning code in 1979, which basically rendered the existing structure nonconforming. The setback on the north side of the property of the existing structure is only 30 feet, while the requirement, new requirement is 40 feet, as the petitioner already mentioned that. The proposed addition will leave an 18-foot setback from the north property line, and that is the, at the furthest point of encroachment, which he also showed, and that is also the details are provided in your, on the drawings in your packet. The proposed addition will also require removal of two trees, and that was reviewed by the city arborist. One of the trees actually poses a danger to the existing structure because it's too close to it, and the petitioner is going to be required to submit a detailed landscape plan showing the replacement of the other tree in order to receive the building permit, and that is in accordance with the tree preservation landscape ordinance. The findings of fact support approval for the variance, as we explained in the, in the staff report. We have to answer any additional questions if you, if you have, provide any clarification. We did serve a proper public notice, and we did also inform the surrounding property owners. As of yet, we have not received any communication or correspondence about it from anybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Radonovich. Radonovanovich.
Radovanovic.
Radovanovic.
Very good. Thank you.
I'll practice. Thank you. And now it's time to ask the Board if they have any questions or requests for clarification from either petitioner or staff.
I, I'm sorry. Lloyd, you want to go first? I have a couple.
I just have one question. I know it's a one-story structure. I assume there's no lower level or basement on this. This is right going to be on a slab, or how is this going to be constructed?
The third bay on the garage will be on a slab. Typical garages are on the slab. However, the addition is going to be on a crawl space, so there's going to be some treated air below it, so it's not on a slab.
Question of staff, if, if this was not a lot-in-depth and was a regular lot, what would this side yard setback requirement be?
It would be 15 feet.
15? And, read the staff or petitioner, is there not, I, I think there's a third tree involved too. Isn't there a back tree on the garage that's...
In front of the garage, correct. We're going to have to remove it, and there'll be some replanting involved.
The, the buffer between the driveway and the garage currently is, it would appear to be considerably wider than the buffer will be between the altered driveway and the garage addition, i.e., there probably isn't going to be room for a tree in that space.
I think you are right. It is closer than the condition is now. So if we put another tree in, it won't be in that same location. It'll be somewhere else. Maybe it'll be off to the side, towards the front entry, but you're right. You can see on the, I'm going to point out, so you can see here is where the new pavement's going to be. That's the line of the new driveway. So you can see there, there's some room. You know, there, there could be room right in that circle there for the tree. That might be the thing to do, is put a tree, so it's going to move from there. I don't think we could replant that tree. Crabs, they don't really survive. So a new tree could go there, which would be close, close.
It's a, it's a small space, but it'd be nice to put a tree there just because it balances the southwest corner of the house where there's another...
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah, right. Yeah, I think a landscape plan certainly would be something that we're going to submit with the building permit, and that's something we'll definitely consider and, and make sure we get in the plan.
Very good. It's a, it's a little bit more than just a master suite. I mean, there's a, there's a sitting room, an office, a breakfast room, a garage addition, a driveway alter.
Correct, correct, correct.
It's a substantial project.
It is. It certainly is. They work at home, and with limited access to the second floor, it becomes a nice space for them to work as well.
Can you just speak to the flat roof shop, to the locations of the plan?
Absolutely. Yeah, we've got, as part of the effort to mitigate the height, we have got a, well, there's several. So let's just start at the top. Here we have a flat roof on the porch. This is a side porch addition, and we have decorative railing over the top. There's a flat roof, and so we think that's a nice element, nice covered entry, nice way to integrate the ramp. So we felt that that's a nice architectural element in the home. You can see here, there's a very small, flat portion. You won't notice that part. It'll look like a peaked, a hipped roof from all directions. It is far back from the front elevation, and I did not want to bring that ridge any higher than any surrounding ridges. So I thought that was a very important architectural feature to keep this low and consistent with the existing conditions that it's tying into. So I felt that was a very successful way of integrating. And of course, on the rear elevation, you can see, this is the breakfast addition. And again, to be consistent with some of the details, and also to have successful drainage on the roof plan, to not bury any other roof areas with a gable, a flat roof became a very desirable element from a functional as well as an aesthetic standpoint. So this is on the rear of the home. Essentially, in the middle, there's some existing flat roof conditions beyond it that were important to maintain water flow. So here's the third flat area. So one, two, and then that side porch we discussed.
And the silver maple has come down a little bit, apparently.
Yeah, the silver maple right now is approximately here. It's alongside the existing L of the home.
Has, has some of it fallen down, or do I have to look?
You know, I, since the winter, I, I haven't, I haven't been in a couple of months. It's possible, but I haven't seen it in a couple of months. I know it's a large one, that it is kind of, it's right there is where it is.
I was there today, and I think most of it's gone.
When the city arborist was out at the site reviewing this request, he did note that the maple was a hazard and did give the homeowner permission to remove it if it became a point of necessity. I, I haven't been out on the site, but it's possible that it was removed.
And as part of the landscape plan, is there some kind of replacement requirement that's...
The arborist will review the, the plan in the context of the removals that were required for the, the project.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just quick, so with the, the addition on the north side to the lot line, I mean, I'm trying to squint, I can't see that number.
The distance from the north side is 18 feet from the furthest point of the addition to the property line. So that, that would be along this line right there, so that's 18. I drew the 15-foot line in there for, for point of reference. And then you've got a 40-foot line there too, so.
Thank you. No further questions?
No questions. No questions.
I had a few quick questions. The neighbor to the north, is that a garage plus a living space over the garage there that borders this house?
I don't, I don't believe it's, it's living space. It's a one-story garage. I know there's no living space above the garage. It's one-story. It appears like there could be some conditioned space that's not garage on the east side of it, but I'm not quite sure what function that has, whether it's a potting shed function. It doesn't appear to be living space to me, but I didn't look in the windows to see.
Okay.
So it's my, it's my understanding that it's mostly storage.
Well, in, in any event, that neighbor has not made any comments. Does the neighbor to the north own the evergreens, or do your clients?
Yes. The neighbor to the north own the evergreens. They're predominantly this cluster here, which is just to the north of the property line.
Now, I know that staff referred to other alternatives that you had considered, but I, I haven't heard what those alternatives were that might have minimized the amount of square footage that's going to be in the setback area.
Well, a couple of things. We met early on. I had an original scheme where I had an addition going beyond the 15-foot setback line, so went further north, and staff said, you know, come back again and, and try to minimize that encroachment. So I came back with this one where we were 18 feet away, and where most of it went from the, the north side to the, to the east side. So we've already met and discussed some options, and, and I've come up with, with an alternative plan. So beyond this, what we looked at, if we wanted to make this garage conform, I have a dash line, hard to see, but I'm kind of lasering it right now. So this one stall would be shifted southward, so would not align with the existing garage, and would create a rather odd condition in relationship to the existing home. It would have this recess, and this is a dining room window. So essentially, from the dining room window, you'd be looking at the side of your garage. So I did not feel that that was architecturally correct. So that, this became the only option for location of... So, that, this became the only option for location of the third stall. So, at the rear condition, if we did something conforming, I have a dashed outline here. I know there's so many dashed lines. So, here's one. So, it would almost touch the rear setback line. So, it'd get very elongated, because we'd have to, we would put this square footage into that volume. So, what that does, it encroaches further towards the east and creates a very long addition, again, architecturally rather odd. And then, it also would cover up a lot of your view from the existing home. In the rear of the home, we have a breakfast room and a family room. So, if we shifted this addition towards the middle of the home, it would cover up your light and view in the existing home. And it would render some of these rooms, from a code standpoint, non-conforming, because you're required in your dining room and your living room, your breakfast room, to have a certain amount of light and ventilation. So, it would cover those windows and also create a very odd condition. So, we felt that this was the most successful of all the options. You know, we briefly, anything towards this side doesn't work, because it's not, would be non-conforming as well. You know, so, from a functional standpoint, we felt on the property, everything oriented towards the north was the best location, particularly considering that this neighbor to the north is pretty far away. You know, their home, there's a courtyard, and the home is off to the north. So, we felt that distance was very comfortable. We felt with all this landscape screening, that that was a very good thing. Certainly, we didn't want to put anything more on the front. We felt that the minimizing what we did in the front was important. And just try to mitigate everything by putting it mostly on the rear and on the side.
So, if you had taken, say, the sitting room and the office and put them to the east of the existing living room, you would still be within the 40-foot setback requirement? Is that your point on that?
If we moved everything, that would be, these are closets here, and this is mostly master bedroom, master bathroom. We have an office and a sitting area here. So, if we shifted all of this, it would have to go beyond this 40-foot setback line. And so, it'd be all here, which would cover up, which would cover up the breakfast room and part of the family room.
So, in either event, you'd be here?
Yes. That's correct. Every option we looked at was like, oh, this requires a variance. So, we felt this was the least egregious of all the options.
And it looked as though you were taking away some of the pavement, the driveway pavement that extends into the yard. Are you reducing the actual amount of pavement?
You know, I think the net result is a slight add. We are, this darkened area there, that's removal of pavement, but it's kind of like, take it there and add it here, so that we can get more green space between the garage and the drive. So, that's a net, that nets out to be equal. But we've got this little triangular portion that we need to access into the third bay of the garage. So, that would be the, if you had to add up the square footage, that would be the additional to the total project.
Well, there's a fence back there, and I thought from one of the plans, you were going to take away some of the pavement that extends beyond the fence.
You know, I have to refer to something I can read. It's hard to read on that site plan. And I think you may be right. There is a slight amount that's being reduced by the fence, you know, maybe five feet in depth. So, yeah, that would further reduce the net additional pavement. But still, I think in total, slightly, slightly more, maybe we're talking about 50 square feet of paving additional solely for that third bay. So, fairly minimal, I think, in increased paving.
All right. Thank you. Those are all my questions. Now, we have the opportunity for public testimony. As I don't see any members of the public here to address, we'll move to cross-examination if any board members want to ask any additional questions of the petitioner or the staff. Do the board members want to have any discussion?
Just a few thoughts, Madam Chairman. I mean, you know, it's a tough one. You get a lot-in-depth, 40-foot setback. That's pretty restrictive. You know, the house is non-conforming. This is an addition that does not front a major street. Obviously, this is well back from Green Bay, so I don't have a lot of heartburn with it. And it's just a little subjective. It looks like a nice addition, appropriate addition for that neighborhood, a lot of open space there, so I'm inclined to support it myself.
In my opinion, I know it goes even beyond 20 feet. It's 18 feet to the north line, but my biggest concern would be if the neighbor to the north has not registered any objection. That seems to be the main person who's going to be affected by this, and I don't see any effect, and obviously, they're not here. So, it sounds to me like it's probably, you know, it's probably the best way you could have configured this, to make this work.
Members of staff, do you have any questions or comments? Then, does a board member appear to make a motion?
Madam Chairman, I move to recommend approval to the city council of the requested variance to allow the addition at 1137 North Green Bay Road to be located no closer than 18 feet to the north property line, as shown on the plat site plan provided in our package this evening.
Is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? The motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very thorough presentation, John. Thank you very much.
And seeing no other items on the agenda, I believe that concludes the zoning board meeting for April 3, 2012. And we are adjourned. Thank you.
Do we have any additional comments?
No, nothing additional. You may want to make a motion to adjourn.
With the grab.
Is there a new meeting we have to?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Right turn.